To our regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterloo City Council this Monday, March 25th. And I forgot to turn my microphone on. Hang on a minute. There we go. Now can you hear me? Okay. Have a good crowd tonight. So, welcome to all of you that are here to observe and welcome to all of you also on our public access television that might be watching tonight or sometime in the near future. Madam Clerk, could you start us please with the roll call?
Yes. Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Getty?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Walper?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Very good. If all of you would please join me in standing for just a moment for silent reflection or prayer, it'd be much appreciated. Our pledge tonight is going to be led by our city clerk, Ms. Suzie Scher. Suzie?
Please join me in reciting the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You may be seated.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed and also approve the minutes from March 18th, 2013, regular session.
Second. Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding the agenda or the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we receive, place, on file, and approve the consent agenda, items 1A through B19, and also with the approval of the consent agenda, I move that we pay our bills, which will be read by our finance chair.
The bills this week are $3,089,316.29. That's 3,089,316.29.
Second. Counsel, will you have any questions regarding the consent agenda? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
I would vote yes, but I need to abstain on a payment of $117.50 to Schmidt Telecom Partners.
Thank you. Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes. Very good. The consent agenda passes. There are just a couple of people I'll mention. Is Matt Gardner or Scott Evans either one here tonight, Matt or Scott? I don't see you, but thanks to them, they have been reappointed to our plumbing board earlier this evening by council. So, just a couple of volunteers that are stepping up and giving of their time and talent to serve on our boards and commission, which is always very much appreciated. We couldn't do business without all of the volunteer help that we get. So, thank you to Matt and Scott very much. Item number two, please, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Schmidt.
I'd like to make a motion, receive and file proof of publication or notice of public hearing, and ask for the purchase of one 2013 Vermeer stump cutter.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any written objections on file to item number two?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against the city buying a stump cutter? A second time.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion and to close the hearing.
Second. All in favor, Counsel, will you have any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of specifications, bid document, et cetera.
Second. That's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Good. That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion and receive and file, instruct city clerk to open and read bids, and refer to public works director for review.
It's a roll call. I'm sorry. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Madam Clerk, can you do us the honors, please? We have three bids tonight, ladies and gentlemen, on this stump cutter with an estimate of $50,000.
And their bid is for $51,432.51432.00. The next bid is from Vermeer Sales and Service of Pella, Iowa. And their bid is for $49,990.49990.00. And the final bid is from Vermeer of Eastern Iowa of Tipton, Iowa. And their bid is for $49,250.49250.00.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mark? I think we have a Vermeer stump cutter.
It's cheaper than a Vermeer painting.
All right. Someone, we take number three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
I'd like to move to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing for a request by Community United Childcare Centers to rezone 4.8 acres of land from R1, 1 and 2 family residence district to R1 CZ, Conditional Zoning District at 3610 Ainsborough Avenue.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any written objections on file to this item?
I have none. Nope. They're on number four. So, no, we do not.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against item number three? Please. Step to the microphone and give us your name and your address, please, and please, please, limit your comments to three minutes.
My name is Charles Burrell. I live at 1416 Ridgemont in Waterloo. I'm here this evening in behalf of the neighbors and associates that live in the Ridgemont area in reference to the daycare center at the corner of Ridgemont and Ainsborough. We have no objection to the daycare center, nor do we have an objection to the rezoning of the daycare center. We think it's a wise move. But what we are concerned about is maintaining the clear access from the daycare center into Solenic Park through the open land that is there seen, and I've got handouts.
Okay. Tim, could you get those, please, and maybe pass them around?
These are for either side of the council. And our concern is that currently and for the last 40 years, that area has been used by the general public as public land for access to Solenic Park and in behalf of the Solenics who donated their land to Solenic Park. We'd like to remain there, but also in behalf of the school property that has to be used as a main entryway to Solenic Park. That land, the school property, was donated to the city by Max Guernsey, and this goes back 40 years ago. We would like to maintain that public land and that public access, and it is currently used by a number of the people throughout the city as well as the soccer groups as demonstrated by these photos. Now, originally, originally, the school board put together two zones of land that they were putting up for sale. The east zone, which is approximately three acres, which contains the daycare center and the West Ridge School, and the west zone, which is three acres, which contains the open ground that we're speaking about at this time. And there have been petitions issued at that time to supplement our claim to hold that land open for public use and continued access to Solenic Park.
Okay. And, Mr. Burrell, I'm sure you're aware, you know, the daycare center that's there now is technically operating outside of their purvey. So, we need to rezone that to make that kosher. And in the process, we're rezoning that remaining 1.8 acres or whatever it is that is bare land now, and we have no intention at all, at this time anyway, or in the near future, to do anything else with that land other than leave it bare, just as it is now. And with the conditional zoning that's being passed tonight, or is being proposed tonight, it would have to come back in front of the council. It would have to go back to planning and zoning, and you would get ample opportunity to make any kind of a case if that were to be the case. So, I think this is actually a good thing that we're doing tonight. It will put a conditional zoning on that property. It will let the daycare center operate in compliance with the zoning laws, and we have no intentions of doing anything else with that land at the present time. So, I think you can rest at ease for the time being.
Perfect.
Thank you, Mr. Burrell.
Now, just one more thing. I'd like you to keep the information I've given you for future reference if it comes up again.
Will do. Thank you, Mr. Burrell.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak either for or against rezoning some acreages on Ainsborough, some land on Ainsborough?
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments and along with the recommendation of approval of Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding this item? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time, ordinance amending, ordinance number 5079, as amended, City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section 10-4-4, approving a rezone on certain property.
Second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to consider and pass for the second and third time and adopt the ordinance.
Second. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion carries. Let's move to resolutions, Counsel, please, but let's take item number four by itself, please. I believe there are some people here that would like to speak to that item, and although it's not a hearing, it has always been my practice to allow within certain limits comments regarding resolutions, and I will do so tonight. So, if somebody could introduce that resolution, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt?
I would like to make a motion to adopt that resolution approving the project agreement for the construction and maintenance of a Martin Luther King Jr. Peace Walk in Washington Park and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second. All right. I will read into record the lower part of that, Mr. Schmidt, or you could, please, as part of the recommendation.
And that includes a recommendation of denial of the Waterloo Leisure Services Commission and Waterloo Historical Preservation Committee.
Second. Thank you very much. So, there's a motion and a second. I'm going to open up the comment period to the public, to the audience, if you'd like. I will ask you whether you're for or against. There's been much conversation about this particular item. This is the third time, I think, it's been back to the council. So, there's been lots of conversation. I would ask that we don't necessarily rehash a lot of what's already been said, but please feel free to come give comments if you'd like, and also, I will adhere strictly to the three-minute limit. So, give us your name and your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes, and the microphone is open.
Ann Olson, 1972 Newell Street. I would like to make two points at this point. Because Washington Park is the most historic area in Waterloo along with Lincoln Park, I strongly feel that it should remain a singular item. I am greatly in favor of the Martin Luther King Peace Walk, but I think it should be relocated elsewhere so it's not overshadowing the value of Washington Park as it is. And secondly, I would like to ask if it is passed and it goes forward to have the Martin Luther King Peace Walk in that area, if we could at least have a group get together and talk about how it is designed. At this point, it is designed to, it takes over all of the area of the park except where the Teahouse and Garden is, and I would like it at least to maybe remain at the lower level along University and leave the upper level along South Street open so that the traditional uses of that park for wedding pictures and weddings and games and picnics could be open for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Olson.
I'm for it.
Latonya, give us your address, please.
607 East Donald Street.
Thank you very much.
And I am for it because, as you can see, we have a very diverse crowd here, and how can we move forward with diversity and undoing racism and all the other events and seminars and workshops that we attend promoting diversity when we will not allow this monument to be erected in Washington Park? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Graves.
Gail Quirk, 245 Alta Vista. I'm in favor of a Martin Luther King walk. I find it very difficult to understand that there is no other place in this community where that park walk could be constructed and not destroy the integrity of the history of this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quirk.
Randy Herod, 111 Highland Boulevard. Like most other people, I'm in favor of having a Martin Luther King memorial. There's already something that's in West High, and there is the highway, the road that's gone through, and putting another memorial in is not a bad thing to do. That's the wrong place to do it, though. I know that not everybody agrees with this, but that is Washington Park, and it is part of the history of the city, and it does focus on the first president, and I think it should be maintained that as much as possible, in fact, even enhanced in that venue. To me, and I realize I've got a strange way of looking at it, but to vote, to make this part of the Martin Luther King walk isn't a way to do detriment to the first president, and I'd hate to see Waterloo looked at as doing something like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herod.
My name is Sharina Salas. I live at 1427 Dearborn. I'm in favor of the walk and the monument to be erected there. I just want to call your attention to the goals of what the city of Waterloo says that their goal is. Goal number eight and goal number nine specifically says to enhance and protect a diverse, family-oriented community where neighborhoods are safe and well-maintained. I think by resurrecting this monument there, it would actually show some value. It would bring investors, developers. It's a highly-traveled highway. A lot of people would look over and see that. It probably would even encourage them to go and visit the park when they don't even usually go into that park. Number nine says enhance the quality of a place, opportunities for the citizens of our community. By only doing this, you would only enhance the quality of living in Waterloo. You would not take away from it.
Thank you.
Good evening. Frida Weems, P.O., Box 2231, to the city and our councilpersons and to our administrators for the city and to our residents and citizens of Waterloo who are seated here today for this meeting. I chair the Martin Luther King Peace Walk Memorial Committee. I'm the fourth chairperson of this committee. We've had before us Barney Niner, Joseph Vick, Community National Bank, and Mason Fromm, and I am the fourth one. Today, I'm glad to have the opportunity to hear some of the interest. I'll say interest because I don't think it's in opposition when I've heard their responses. I think it was information that was not properly disseminated, or people didn't have access to it, and we learned that, the committee learned that over this process of maybe three and a half years, that people weren't privileged to the same information that we had, and I think we took for granted that everyone was privileged to this rich history that we have here in Waterloo. So, it's my privilege to, I am honored to quickly recite and go over the information, the history of this memorial, because it isn't an idea or a project that was just picked out of the air and we chose Washington Park because of, just to access any particular property. Washington Park has the history and the value that Ms. Olson speaks of and the integrity that Ms. Quirk is concerned about, and Mr. Herod expresses even more concern and the need for me to share this information. And I'm hoping that once I hear this information, I think you all might be pretty pleased, and I think we can pretty much assume that this city is going to back this project as we've been on this for some time. Thursday, April 9th, 2009, the Cedar Valley Civil Rights Memorial Committee, together with AHTS Architects and the Mud Agency, unveiled the architectural plans for the Cedar Valley Martin Luther King Jr. Peace Walk Memorial at Mud Agency Studios in Cedar Falls. The proposed Martin Luther King Jr. Peace Walk Memorial at Washington Park commemorates slain civil rights leader Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s historical visit to the Cedar Valley November 10th, 1959. Waterloo resident and my mother, civil rights activist Anna Mae Weems, invited Dr. King to Iowa during a meeting she and Dr. King attended at the White House for a labor meeting. Dr. King and Mrs. Weems were invited to the White House to serve on a presidential labor committee under President Dwight D. Eisenhower. It was during the break of this meeting that Ms. Weems shared with Dr. King the racial and civil rights climate in Iowa. This conversation prompted Mrs. Weems to invite Dr. King to Iowa, and without hesitation, Dr. King accepted Mrs. Weems' invitation to Iowa. On November 10th, 1959, immediately following the White House meeting, Ms. Weems and Dr. King departed Washington, D.C. on a plane, and later that evening arrived at the Waterloo Municipal Airport. This trip would mark Dr. King's first trip to Iowa and only visit to the Cedar Valley in his lifetime. He lived 39 years. We're one of many, of a few places that Dr. King visited in his short 39 years of life. Despite receiving numerous death threats and negative criticism, Ms. Weems secured speaking engagements, appearances, and introductions for Dr. King in the Cedar Valley and other communities in Iowa. Once in Iowa, Dr. King was taken to several venues where the people of Iowa could see and hear the preacher and civil rights leader from Atlanta, Georgia. Prior to Dr. King's visit, Iowans had limited or no information about the civil rights movement or Dr. King's message of nonviolent resistance. Washington Park, one day, is where, one morning during his visit, Dr. King and Ms. Weems waited to meet with pastors from the historic Church Road District. Dr. King and Ms. Weems talked and walked the grounds of Washington Park while waiting for churchroll pastors to arrive at their respective churches. And I want to put a note there. At that time, remember, Dr. King was not the Dr. King we honor and you presented that wonderful proclamation on the Martin Luther King banquet. That was not the man that we celebrate today. That was not the man back then in 1959. In fact, many individuals said he was a threat to society. He was dangerous. He was going to get you killed. It was very negative. So, the people around him were afraid of him and said you shouldn't touch him. He was the worst thing for America. Waterloo, Iowa, the Cedar Valley, the state of Iowa, said no. He was welcomed here, and it was the churchroll pastors, they were the first to welcome him here with no hesitation. They welcomed him open arms. He was in their churches. Upon his arrival at his church, the pastor of First Congregational United Church of Christ learned that Dr. King and Ms. Weems were waiting in Washington Park and promptly invited them into his church and was the first churchroll pastor to meet and welcome Dr. King. In March 2008, just weeks before the nation and the world would remember the 40th anniversary of Dr. King's assassination in Memphis, Tennessee, Ms. Weems organized a committee of Cedar Valley leaders from all disciplines. This committee of civic and community leaders committed to building a memorial to acknowledge and commemorate Dr. King's historical November 1959 visit to Iowa and honor Dr. King's legacy and universal contributions. The proposed peace walk, designed by AHTS Architects, will be the first memorial in the state of Iowa honoring Dr. King, Dr. King's historical visit to Iowa and his legacy, and will be the only architectural memorial of its kind in the world. The Martin Luther King Jr. Peace Walk Memorial description and details are amazing and thoughtful in consideration of Dr. King's visit to the Cedar Valley, his national and international message of peace, justice, and prosperity for all, and the timeless impact the legacy continues to afford all. Waterloo holds the distinction of the highest concentration of African-Americans, minorities, and most diverse city in Iowa. Waterloo's combined distinctions and its unique and unsuspecting civil rights history proves the ideal location for the Martin Luther King Peace Walk Memorial at Washington Park. And we have gone, since 2009, we did this unveiling, and it was the former mayor, Tim Hurley, who was so admirable and willing to back this project, and the city was all for it, and so, we had some, we learned through that process. It was a learning process for the committee. We learned, and I'd like for those committee members to stand very quickly if we can.
If you can't ramp it up, I'd appreciate it.
Yes. Well, I took my, I took some, my person's time, they left, so.
Let's don't.
Can I ask?
Three minutes.
Just for the memorial, can we have the committee members standing who are present here so you'll know who they are?
Yes, you may.
And supporters.
Very good.
So, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to have them. We have our architects here present. We'd be happy to ask any, answer any questions that you may have of this project.
Very good. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions, Counsel, at this time? Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Weems.
Mary Potter, 207 Leland. I just, I wrote some things down so that I would not take more than my three minutes. I think this project has become one of the most divisive project in this city that I can ever remember. In one of the publications that was put out, it said Waterloo is identified as the most racially segregated city in Iowa. Every month, week, and almost daily, acts of violence are reported from the city's streets. Events, projects, and campaigns inspired by Dr. King's life and message will focus our community's positive response to these challenges. I think that Martin Luther King would have absolutely abhorred the direction this project has taken. The steering committee went forward in publishing brochures, having press releases, and whatever before ever getting the approval of this council. There are significant memorials to this great man all over the country, and yet we are led to believe this will put Waterloo on the map. We've already named a street for him, put a memorial at West High, and together we celebrate his life each year. In order for a project to succeed, it needs to have everyone on board, the council, the planning and zoning department, leisure services, and last but not least, the Church Road Historic Neighborhood Association. This has not been done. Without a dialogue with all these groups, there is only going to be more divisiveness. Without a dialogue with all these groups, there is only going to be more divisiveness. I would like to have the council consider tabling this motion and calling together these groups to work out a plan feasible to all so that this can be a positive for the city and will be something that we can all work together on to make a reality. I would like us to consider creating a corridor of greatness with people from Waterloo and Iowa as well as our country leaders being recognized in our city. People like Minnie Crippen, Mortimer Cleveland, Jesse Cosby and others need to also be recognized. Then we'll have something that we can truly be proud of and others will want to come and see it, and it will be uniquely Waterloo's. To vote on this with a yes merely to, once and for all, get it off the table is a poor excuse of trying to work together for the good of all. There can be no peace in Waterloo until we all can work together and everyone can feel ownership in those things that involve our neighborhoods, our cities, and our lives. We have been at odds since 2008, and it's time that we come together and work this out amicably. Otherwise, all of Martin Luther King's quotes that have been given will only be lip service and we will continue to be a divided city. Please consider allowing these groups to work together to bring back a workable proposal. When we work together, we succeed. When we don't, we fail. Let's make this a win-win for everyone. Rome wasn't built in a day. We all want to win, and in order to do that, we need to find consensus. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Potter.
I'm Tim Ensworth. My address is 9021 Eta in Cedar Falls, but my work address is 608 West Fourth Street in Waterloo. I'm at First Congregational United Church of Christ, which sits just kitty-corner from Washington Park. And whenever, when I first heard of the plans for this memorial in Washington Park two or three years ago, I was thrilled from the beginning and continue to be thrilled with that. As has already been said, Waterloo is unique in Iowa in terms of its diversity and that particular neighborhood, our neighborhood there, churchroad neighborhood, is also uniquely diverse in the city of Waterloo. So I can't think of a more appropriate location for this, for a symbol of a person who stood for reconciliation between folks of different ethnic groups and stood for peace and nonviolent resolution of problems. So I think it's a very appropriate place. I think it fits in well with the rest of the historical district there and would just augment what we already are highlighting in that area in terms of a place in Waterloo where we look to for our history. Martin Luther King was not an African-American hero. He was an American, excuse me, he was an American hero, which is why in Washington you have the Martin Luther King Memorial with the Lincoln Memorial, with the Washington Monument, et cetera, because we recognize that he simply continued what Washington and our other leaders have started in terms of realizing the dream of what the American dream was about in the first place. So I think it only, I think it ties in well with Washington Park because this is just augmenting what Washington started. In the same way, the pagoda is about peace. It's about reconciliation between Japanese and Americans after World War II. And again, this just simply ties in and augments what we've already set aside that part for, to talk about something that is what we are about as Americans. We are about being for the rights of all people, we're about peace, and to me, this just enhances it. It would really enhance our neighborhood and enhance our city.
Thank you, Tim. If there's no one else, I'm going to, I'm going to end the public comment part. If there's anyone else, please come now. I'm going to end the public comments and we're going to have council discussion. So public comment is over. Counsel, the floor is open for comment from counsel.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Welper.
I think I can probably speak for all of the council that none of us are opposed to this project. I think we all agree that it would be a great project. We'd be proud to have it in Waterloo. Again, our problem is, is having it in Washington Park. Ms. Weems stated that this idea came about in 2009. At that time, there was a lot of land that the city has now declared in the floodplain, quite a few blocks, actually. This is property that we won't be able to build on. We're going to have problems with having people maintain their properties because they're now in the floodplain. I guess I would like for this committee to relook at the west side, if this is where they choose to have it. I think we're going to have numerous places where it could be built.
Thank you, Mr. Welper. Anyone else? Mr. Schmidt.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a quick question, and this kind of follows along with what Councilman Welper just talked about, and also I think it was Mrs. Cork that raised the issue about supporting the concept but not at Washington Park. And I guess I would like to ask a question of, I think it's Mr. Kurtz, who would be the landscape architect that was involved with this. If I'm not mistaken, I think there were at least 16 different locations that, that's been part of the delay for this process taking three and a half years, that variety of locations all over the city of Waterloo were looked at and, for a variety of different reasons, did either not fit. Well, I'll let you talk.
Well, yeah, we did study over, probably.
Give us your name and address, please.
Larry Kurtz, HTS Architects.
Thank you.
We did study, we had 16 initial sites, I believe it was, and we added several after, you know, discussion with other committees and interested parties. So we did study quite a few sites, and those sites are all available in their ratings. So we did quite a bit of homework to find any suitable site.
Thank you.
And we did present to some of the neighborhood groups, and we've had a lot of, a lot of meetings in three or four years.
Thank you, Mr. Kurtz. Mr. Jones.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, as everybody has said, I don't think you'd find anybody saying they don't want the peace walk. It just comes down to, do they want it in Washington Park? Washington Park is somewhat unique in that, you know, it's right in the middle of the Grouat Museum complex, so that makes it a little more unique than, say, putting the park, the MLK Peace Walk in Lincoln Park, for example. So there's some differences there. But if it does happen to pass, I would ask that, you know, and it does have to come back to council for design, but that we keep that footprint, you know, as compact as possible so that it really does not interact with the traditional uses of the park as it exists today.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
And then also, at some point, I'd like to talk about a modification to the agreement.
Okay.
Minor modification to the agreement.
Okay, there, for everyone's information, there is a development agreement that is the document that is referred to in item number four that's been developed by our Planning and Zoning Commission and others with input from Ms. Weems, I know, and from others that sets out a timeframe as to when construction should start, that sets out a timeframe for when money has to be raised, when the project has to be completed, et cetera. So that is the document that Mr. Jones is referring to. I'm going to have to ask for guidance from either the clerk or the city attorney as to how we can modify that at this point.
Jim Walsh, city attorney. Mr. Mayor, the way the resolution is currently phrased, it would, if passed, require you to execute the agreement that now exists. If you would, or the council would prefer to have any amendments made, then it should be modified to refer back to my office for further revisions, and they should point out what areas that would need to be revised.
Would we then need another resolution to modify the original?
It could just be a document for approval at that point, coming back to council.
Okay, because, Mr. Jones, what is being presented tonight is the document that has been presented, and I think modifying it at this time, as Mr. Walsh has just said, would be in error to procedurally. So we need to pass the document that has been presented tonight. If there are modifications that are needed, that needs to be discussed with probably the committee and the attorney's office.
Well, it should be clear when it's passed if it's this document or a modified one. We need, right now, the motion on the table is this document. So we need an amendment, a motion to amend, to include certain changes, delineate what those are, pass that motion to amend, then pass the main motion.
Okay, so we can, we can make amendments to the, okay.
Certainly.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just a point of clarification. We had to make an amendment from an already-signed document?
It's not signed yet.
It's not? Okay.
It can't be signed till the council approves it.
Okay.
If the council wants to change it before it's signed, that'd be good. It's hard to change it after.
I'm assuming then that, Mr. Jones, you could make a motion with your changes that you're recommending, and it would, in and of itself, could die for lack of a second or it could get a second and die for lack of passing, or it could pass and your amendments would be adopted.
Can we hear what it is?
Yeah, what are, tell me how to do this correctly.
There is another way to do it.
All right, help me.
You could table it, pending amendments, and discuss what those amendments are, but I wouldn't like to just keep trying to guess what you want to have. So it'd be better to debate that now if there's changes.
Do you have, Mr. Getty?
I'd also like to, the recommendation of denial, I'd like to see a letter from the Waterloo Leisure Service Commission and the Waterloo Historical Preservation Committee to see why they denied it.
I believe, Harold, there was some documentation of that. Madam Clerk, is that correct? In the initial, in the initial resolution that was almost three years ago now, two to two and a half years ago, there was documentation that is on file, that those two organizations denied it. But I don't, we don't have it currently. There again, that's not part of the motion that's on the table, but I'm sure maybe we could get a verbal answer to that question at this time if you'd like. I know we have people from Leisure Services here, and I know we have people from the Historical Society here, if you would like to hear that.
I would like to hear it.
Okay. Mr. Hudding, could you give us your opinion as to why the Leisure Services Commission denied it?
Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director. In all honesty, it has been a number of years, and there was a lot of debate at our commission meeting. So to give one specific reason why it was not approved is difficult because it was a split vote. There were arguments pro and con throughout the meeting. So I can get, I can produce the minutes, but for me to specify exactly what the issues were would be difficult.
Who's in attendance? Who's the council liaison at that time? Weren't they in attendance?
I believe Mr. Getty was in attendance, so maybe his memory's a little better than mine. But there were, many of the things that you heard discussed tonight were also discussed at our commission meeting. And basically, it was a split vote over these very same issues that have been discussed tonight. So I can produce the minutes, and I will do that if you like, but I can't do it instantaneously.
Thank you. I know Ms. Olson is here as a representative from the Historical Society. Could you or Ms. Cork, one of you?
Ms. Olson.
Oh, that's right, Ms. Olson is off the Historical Society. Is there anyone here then from the Historical Society officially?
Mary Potter, Chairman of the Commission of Historical Preservation. At the time we met, we thought that the project was a good project. We questioned overlaying it on Washington Park, which is one of our historical parks. We questioned that we did not need to increase more places in Waterloo that were attractive rather than just stockpiling one on top of the other. That was our reasoning.
Thank you, Ms. Potter. Mr. Jones, would you like to tell us what your, would you like to put it in the form of a motion or do you want to just discuss it first?
Let's discuss it first. And it's fairly small, and it's to item six, the maintenance and the endowment fund. And in that second paragraph, I believe it needs some language to say that the endowment would be held by the community foundation or like organization, and that's it.
I don't have a copy in front of me. Who holds it now? What does it say?
It doesn't say.
Right now, it currently reads, "To defray the cost of maintenance and replacement, companies shall establish an endowment fund."
It just doesn't say where it's going to be held.
Right, but it should be held at a different place.
Even if they have their own 501(c)(3), and so they want them to pay a 2% administrative fee on that money when that money could possibly be used?
Okay, does anybody else have comments regarding that? Would you like to make that as a motion? I don't.
What, excuse me, Mr. Jones, what you're asking is a third party hold the money.
Yes.
And I think that can be arranged with a bank account requiring duplicate signatures.
Sure.
Okay. Further comments from council? Anyone?
Mr. Mayor, I know, I just hate to see this as a divisive issue, which it has seemed to grow into, and I really feel that time is now. We've sat on it for three years. There hasn't been better plans that come up. I am in favor of the location. It's in the historic district with the Grouat Museums and with the Bronze Park that's being built along the highway there. I think the time is now to do it, and location, I really do think is fitting to overlay it within Washington Park.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Hart? Mr. Getty? Ms. Cole? Anyone? Okay.
Well, I've got some comments, but are we going to, is this, whatever David's talking about, is that, are we moving on or what, where are we at?
That was never put in the motion.
Okay.
That's going to be discussed if we need to.
Jim addressed that.
It's never been made a motion, so I'm going to call for the question.
Okay, if I could, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. And I was just trying to stay out of the middle of that. I, just to reiterate what Councilman Greenwood said, you know, we've had a number of meetings, and there have been a variety of different views on this thing, but I do think, and you can see again from who's in the room tonight, that this project, and we've got a little bit of history where we've got the Ur of Warren Golf Course at Burns Park, so we've already established this ability to have one entity overlaid over another, so I don't think we're breaking any new ground there. But as you can see from the audience tonight, this does tie well together with the Grouat Museum. There are a number of Grouat board members here tonight. A lot of the neighbors, the business neighbors in that community, I know bridges, retirement centers supportive of this, and a lot of it has to do with the fact that that park right now is not really used. And what it is used for is not necessarily for positive things, from what we're told by the neighbors, that there may be some misbehaving that goes on in that park because it's not utilized. And one of the values of this, in addition to creating some reverence for Dr. King, is to help to invigorate that neighborhood. And going back to the Grouat again, one of the proposals is for them to be able to manage the walking review of the park. And so, I mean, the thing just ties together extremely well in that location. You've heard from Pastor Einzweiler, and I know there's some other pastors from the churchroad neighborhood that are in favor of this, and I think from a public safety standpoint, I think from just a variety of different standpoints that this is the ideal place to have this. So that's why I'm supportive of it.
Further? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
No.
Mr. Getty?
No.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
No.
Very good. The request is approved. The issue does pass. So we are going to move forward. Thank you very much. Let's take items five, six, send seven, please. Let's do all of them. Mr. Hart?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Hart?
I move to adopt a resolution approving recommendation of award, a bid to Bill Caldwell Ford of Hudson, Iowa, in the amount of $153,192 for the purchase of six 2013 Ford interceptor patrol vehicles. Six, I move to approve change order number one for a net increase of $38,777 for work performed by Story Construction of Ames, Iowa, on the disinfection facilities, contract number 817. And number seven, I move to approve change order number two for a net decrease of $1,386 for work performed by K&amp;W Electric, Inc. of Cedar Falls, Iowa, on the rehabilitate airfield vault project at Waterloo Regional Airport. And number eight, I move to approve, move to adopt a resolution approving Convention and Visitors Bureau Board recommendations for funding the following hotel motel tax mini-grant requests, George With State Park, in the amount of $2,000.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Hart.
Second.
And a second, council, do you have any questions regarding five, six, seven, or eight?
Mr. Greenwood? Number six, the change order there, I understood this from the background, that Mid-America change their policy, how they, that we didn't think we were going to have to pay for that, but then we ended up having to pay for it? Could you just explain what the, what change or what their policy is on that?
Larry Smith, Superintendent Waste Management Services.
Larry Smith, Superintendent Waste Management Services. Originally, Mid-America would supply transformers for projects like this, and I believe in the last couple of years, they've changed their policy where they do not supply them, that the customer themselves will supply the transformers. They, they will sell them to us, or we can rent them from them, but if we rent them, rent from them, over a period of about five years, we've already paid for the transformer, and we continue to make payments. So we elected to purchase the transformers outright.
Thank you. You're back. Thanks, Larry. Further questions? Mr. Welper?
Just, just to comment on number five, I think we're probably all surprised, and if this holds up, it proves that state bid can be underbid.
That's correct. It's a good thing.
Yeah, sure was.
Glad to see that. Anything else? It's a roll call vote on those four, please. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number nine, please. Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor? Mr. Schmidt?
Item number nine, I'd make a motion, receive, file, consider and pass for the first time, an ordinance amending the seven dash five B dash one and seven dash five B dash seven portions of the weed ordinance, and that's amendment to weed ordinance.
Second.
You have any questions, council?
Mr. Mayor, can someone explain the amendments to that?
Sure. Larry, you want to do that, please?
People at home know what we're doing.
Uh, this is the weed ordinance, uh, I can't remember what it was.
This is certified mailing issue.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. I, I remember. Yeah, Susie, go ahead. Yeah, it's certified mail issue, but go ahead, Susie.
Yeah, what the ordinance is changing is currently the properties have to be posted, and then a certified letter has to be sent. The problem with that is with a lot of the landowners or property owners not being here in town or having P.O. boxes, they're not necessarily getting it in a timely manner because it has to be signed for and that sort of stuff. So what this would change is that it can just be mailed by regular mail instead of certified mail. Last year, for the weeds, and, and some of our other nuisance ordinances can be mailed by regular mail, this one just happened to be certified mail. Last year, I want to say they spent over $15,000.
$147.
To be exact, on certified mail, and it's a lot of work for our office and theirs too, so this would just change it so that we can put it by regular mail and just post the property.
Very good. Thank you.
Anything further? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, in ten, I move to instruct Airport Director to prepare plans, specifications,
form of contract for the rehabilitate T-hanger A roofing and siding project at Waterloo Regional Airport. In number eleven, I move that we instruct the city engineer to prepare plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera, for the sidewalk repair program and trail repairs, 2013 Zone Three, contract number eight forty-eight.
Second.
Council, do you have any, you have any questions regarding these two? Ten or eleven? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, in ten and eleven, I move that we receive and file plans, specifications, form of contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, in ten, I move to, I mean, I move to adopt a resolution setting data hearing and bid opening as April 15, 2013, for the T-hanger, and a bid opening date of April 8 for sidewalk repairs, and after that, instruct city clerk to publish notice of plans, specifications, form of contracts.
Second.
It's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, that's the end of our regularly scheduled business tonight. We had a good, good council meeting tonight. It's time for oral presentations. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the mayor, to the city council, now is the time to do so. Please, come to the microphone, give us your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Steve Murphy at 124 Terrace Drive. We got a initial copy from Chief Trelka of the proposed nuisance ordinance with, for landlords, and I think the members of the West Central Neighborhood that are down here on a weekly basis are, want to formally request a work session. We have some concerns, and we don't want to, we want to try and find the straightest line to the finish, so if we get a work session, we could bring some of the concerns we have, we could hear maybe what the landlords think, and we could try to move on this thing as quickly as possible.
Steve, I'm not sure what this thing is, and I'm not sure what you want the work session for, and what we're going to get accomplished.
There is a preliminary copy of an ordinance being proposed for nuisance landlord, and